Pledge of the Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, why do you not see? Hmm, what do you not see? Yeah. Good evening, Fox C six. It's good to see everyone here. We are at 2.2, welcome and introductions.
Dustin Bain, Assistant Superintendent Elementary.
Tracy Hagerty, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Tammy Cardona, Assistant Superintendent Secondary.
Travis Littner, Board Member.
Michael Myers, Board Member.
Judy Smith, Board Member.
Curtis Fraser, Board Treasurer.
Susan Graham, Board Secretary.
Nathan Birch, Assistant Superintendent of HR.
Tracy Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Jim Shaloo, Board Member.
Todd Scott, Board Vice President.
Paul Frigo, Superintendent.
April Mackel, President. We need a motion to approve the meeting agenda for August 12th, 2025.
Motion, Smith.
Second, Myers.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's it. 3.1 Patron Comments.
There are no patron comments this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bain. 3.2 Superintendent Comments.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. It's great to see you all here. Seven days from tomorrow morning at 7 o'clock, we'll have students in our buildings. They'll start arriving about, what, 6:15 team? Parents can't wait to get their kids dropped off at school. So we'll see everybody Wednesday morning. Along that end, we've had a new teacher orientation started Friday. We had 60 new teachers this year. We've had some great activities here at the Service Center. We even did a bus tour of the district and let them see where our families and kids live. Thought that was a great add to our what we do. Like I said, 60 new teachers, 27 of which are first-year teachers. We have 13 that are alumni and 12 who taught, student taught, in our district last year.
Oh, good.
And we hired 12 of those people in the district. So, uh, excited and let's give them a nice welcoming applause. And as I said, we're, school starts next week. We're going to continue with our popular High Five Fridays. Those of you that got to participate knows those are fun. As well as Finding Frigo, we'll be announcing those dates soon for the year. And then I'll see everybody next Wednesday. I'll be out at the driveway directing people. And we'll have our team out there, but it'll be a great day. If you haven't been to the, you've been to the Service Center, but if you haven't seen the Fox campus, the new parking lot is phenomenal. We're going to have new football lights at Fox. They're unbelievable. The new baseball field down at Sekman's unbelievable. The scoreboard is. Parking lots at Ridgewood, Londell and Antonia, great add. Just a lot of good things going on this summer and people can be welcomed to buildings that look a lot different than when they left them last fall, or last spring. And we're still having people enroll. Online registration continues. Please, if you haven't already, please get that done. That's very important so we make sure we have buildings properly staffed for all the kiddos that arrive on Wednesday. Free and reduced meal applications, again, it's more than just the meal. It helps us with test fees, insurance, scholarships, and also with school funding. So it's very important that you fill it out. I talked to Kayla the other day and she said we, and she's going to give me the number, we have more applications this year than we've seen in a long time. So our, our marketing people and others have really helped get the message out. We appreciate families taking the time to fill that out. And I'll have that number at a later date. And that's it. And again, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.
All right, thank you. 3.3 American Heart Association. We have a presentation this evening.
Good evening. I am Carrie Bockard. I am with the American Heart Association. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. And I have a special guest from Rockport Heights Elementary School, Hannah Caputa. And she's going to share her story in a little bit. But I am here to celebrate with you your amazing partnership that we have with the Fox School District. So thank you so much for having me. As you know, one in three Americans are impacted by heart disease, right? So I always tell the kids, look to your right, look to your left, which one of you, the three of you are impacted. And, you know, I love to tell stories about how I'm impacted. And the most recent story for me was this summer, I was just sharing this. I was driving with my mom. We'd been to Walmart on a nice, cool St. Louis morning. I'm just joking. It was one of the really hot days. And I looked over at her and she kind of was giving me jarbled talk. We were going to go to Culver's for lunch. And next thing I knew, she had a stroke in the front seat of my car. And I knew what to do because of working for the American Heart Association. So our goal, working with schools, is to create a nation of lifesavers. We want all students and staff and faculty to know the steps of hands-only CPR and the signs of a stroke. So use your muscle memory. I think I talk about this every year. I'm going to quiz you at the end to see if you remember those things. Whoop, let me flip this here. See, I told you I bumbled a little bit. Okay, so Fox Schools, we had over 16,000 schools across the United States participate in either our Kids' Heart Challenge or American Heart Challenge program. We reached 14 million students nationwide, connecting with over 10 million families. And 25,000 teachers were engaged with partnerships with us. Since the beginning, since the AHA was founded in 1924, we have cut the deaths of cardiovascular disease in half, which is an amazing accomplishment. Since this slide was posted, we have bumped up our research funding to $6.1 billion since 1949. And I was talking with one of my Hearty Ambassador's moms. She said it all started with a checkup with my child's pediatrician. He was listening to her heart with a stethoscope. He figured out there was something wrong. That was in August. By October, she had had open-heart surgery. So it's all because of the research that we're doing in collaboration with many, many different organizations. So right here in the St. Louis area, we are funding over $12 million in research. There's $16 million worth of research in the state of Missouri. We also spend a lot of time and money and efforts on advocacy. As you all probably know, Governor Parsons passed the SERP legislation, cardiac emergency response plans in schools. Just like you have fire drills and tornado drills, we want schools to be prepared if something happens in their school. So we're really pleased that that legislation passed. We're waiting on some of the funding updates on how you guys can access that to train staff, get AEDs and what have you. But when schools partner with us, they have the opportunity to apply for grants with the American Heart Association. And this year, one of our focuses is going to be on CPR education, AEDs, things like that in your schools. Okay, but the main reason I'm here is to celebrate the amazing job that your staff members do within your schools. You had seven schools, and they're listed up here, that partnered with us this year. We reached over 3,800 students and families. And the Fox School District raised a little bit over $22,000 for the American Heart Association. So give yourselves a round of applause. It's amazing. As a thank you to you, we have the Show Me Jumpers. They're a jump rope team out of Fort Zumalt School District. They came and visited Simpson Schools, Simpson Elementary in Rockport Heights this year and did an assembly at those schools. And this is a secret. He doesn't know this yet, but I'm sharing it a little bit early. Terry Sapper, who's at Simpson Elementary, is going to be honored this year with the Missouri Hearties Loyalty Award. He has been partnering with the American Heart Association for a long, long time. So we're going to honor him too. So don't let it out of the bag. So, okay. So I'm going to turn it over to Hannah, and she's going to share a little bit about the need, right? Why do we partner with schools? And she's going to share a little bit about her story. And I'm going to-
I'll hold it. How about that? Does that sound good?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Hannah Caputa, and I am going into fourth grade, Rockport Heights Elementary School. And I'm a heart wearer. A heart wearer is someone who is born with a heart defect. This means there is something different or wrong with my heart. I was five years old when I found out I had a heart defect. I had a lot of different tests to find out what was wrong. And I was six when I had my heart surgery to fix my heart. I flew in a plane to Boston Children's Hospital to have my surgery. I was in the hospital for six days. After my surgery, I woke up. It felt like a two-second nap. After I recovered, I was able to fly back home and see my sisters again. It took me several months to get my strength and energy back. When I was mostly healed, I got to go back to school, dance and gymnastics. Activities and sports like these are really good for your heart. There are a lot of kids like me who have heart problems. The Kids' Heart Challenge, which is for elementary schools and American Heart Challenge, which is for middle and high schools, helps raise money for kids like me. So heart wearers can have a healthier heart and healthier lives. These programs can be done at all the schools in the Fox C six district. It is free for schools to participate. And then when they participate, the schools get money for their school dues for their PE and recess. Please join me in participating in these programs to raise money for heart wearers like me and other heart wearers in our district. Thank you.
Great job. And Hannah and I met when I was at Rockport. Her PE teacher said, "We have a special speaker." And she gave this speech to her entire school. She's amazing.
So she's going to be speaking at different things. We're going to be using her in videos to share and highlight. And I'm going to share some of those videos with the PE teachers here in Fox so that they can see I'm a kiddo that's right here in their school district.
Okay.
Good job. You can hang out here with me. Just take a deep breath. Okay, so the need, I mean, obviously Hannah firsthand here is the need, right? That's why you all support the American Heart Association. And the main thing is less than one in five children who suffer cardiac arrest actually survive, right? So we want it to be muscle memory. And I say this every time. It's like stop, drop and roll. When you're old like me, we learned that. You knew what to do if you caught on fire. We want all students to know what to do to perform hands-only CPR. We're looking at 60 minutes a day, exercise. Less than 20% of American children are getting the minimum requirements for exercise a day, right? And then finally, depression and anxiety, those of you that are in the schools, you know that it's higher than it ever has been before. And we know physical exercise helps to make the anxiety and the depression go down. So those are just a few of the reasons why we appreciate your support. Okay, so what can you guys do to continue to help us? Well, please, please, please celebrate kiddos like Hannah and celebrate the schools and the amazing work that they're doing to support the American Heart Association. Number two, continue to support state and federal legislation, right, and school board policies that are heart-healthy. And then finally, learn the steps of hands-only CPR and signs of a stroke. Remember I said pull the muscle memory back? So I'm going to start with the easy one. Anyone here in the medical field for a job? Okay, because I had a nurse, one of the last school boards, and she knew all the answers. So I was going to say, you're out. You don't get to answer. Fast, okay? That's the signs of a stroke. Anyone know what the F stands for?
Face.
Face drooping, right? A. Your arm is going to tingle, right? Your arm will tingle or you will have weakness in your arm. S. Slurred speech. And T, it is-
Time.
-time to call 911. Okay, so we teach the kids that acronym, super easy, right, that muscle memory. Hands-only CPR, right? How many beats per minute?
100.
100 to 120, good job. What's a common song that you know if you perform hands-only CPR?
Well, there's two. Would you want the good one or the bad one?
Well, you can-
Not another one bites the dust. That's the bad one. Stayin' Alive is the other one.
Stayin' Alive, yep. Or Baby Shark, doot doot.
Oh, that one.
Baby Shark, doot doot, doot doot. So we teach the kids that. It sounds silly, but it's fun. It's an easy way to teach them. And we just hope that we continue to create a nation of lifesavers so that we have research to help kiddos like Hannah and then also help people if they have cardiac arrest. So thank you for letting me come. I love to come annually and just share the good things that you're doing. I know as a school board, it's nice to hear the good things that your district's doing. So I really appreciate it. And good luck with the beginning of the school year.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Hannah. You did a great job too. All right, 3.4 Culture and Climate Presentation. Mr. Presidento.
Good evening. Tonight, I am going to share the results of the 2025 District Staff Culture and Climate Survey. As a reminder, this is a survey we give annually in the springtime. This year, we administered the survey from May 14th to May 22th. So there is just over a one-week window for our staff survey. The purpose of the Staff Culture Climate Survey is to collect data each spring and continually evaluate growth areas, evaluate growth and our areas for improvement. We do this so that we can gather actionable growth data on the district's culture and climate. On the previous slide, I showed the date range for the survey, which was May 14th through 22. So we've typically given this late spring, early summer. We will be pushing the window up and administer this survey in the winter around January so that the data can be ready that same school year instead of sharing that over the summer as we lead into the next school year. So staff members who I know are eagerly watching and waiting to see when they can take the staff survey again can know to be on the lookout for that around January. So just the general information I share every year, this is an anonymous survey that we collect through the survey platform Qualtrics. There is no way for me to know who submits what answers to the survey unless someone literally puts their name on it. So staff can be assured that their responses are anonymous. We collect building data. So we ask what building you work in and if you're certified or operational. We do not ask any additional demographic data because any additional demographic data would allow us to identify individuals. So if there's only one nurse in a building and they say they're the nurse, it's pretty easy to figure out who that is. So we don't ask those questions. Most of the questions outside the demographic ones were optional. There were 41 multiple-choice items with those five, five answer choices from strongly agree, strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree and strongly agree. And then one open-ended response question at the end. We had just about half of our staff complete the survey, so 788 responses. About 33% of our operational staff and about 60% of our certified staff completed this year's staff survey. And you can see that's down just a tick from last year. We're going to go through a couple of graphs. I'm not going to, I'm not going to review every single question on the survey, but we're going to pick out a number of the items that I think are a nice holistic view of how our staff responded on the Staff Culture Climate Survey. On the left of each slide, you will see a pie graph or a donut graph, depending on your sweet treat preferences, that will give you this year's responses, the strongly agree, agree, neutral, no opinion, disagree or strongly disagree. And then on the right, you'll see a bar graph that gives a three-year trend. If I can speak briefly in generalities, as we're looking at the three-year trends, the affirmative answers are trending upward and the negative answers seem to be trending downward. So overall, we're pretty happy with the responses we're seeing on this. And we're seeing some growth as we go year by year on our survey, and that's obviously what we're hoping for. The first item we're going to take a look at is building strong relationships with students is a priority among my colleagues. We saw that 88.97% of all staff responded in the affirmative. And you can see how the three-year trend looks for that item. The next item, we look at this every year. I am proud to work at Fox C six. And we had 71.78% of staff responding in the affirmative. And I do want to draw attention to the bar graph on the right here. This is that very nice-looking stair step where we have growth in the affirmative and a decrease in that disagree and strongly disagree over the last three years. The next item we'll look at, there are clear channels of communication between all administrators and me. This is both at the building and district level. And we had 58.46% of respondents respond in the affirmative. And you can see kind of how that is tracked over the last three years as well. My administrator slash supervisor treats me with respect. And we had 85.71% of respondents respond in the affirmative. And you see how that's looked over the last three years. The next item, Fox C six values my professional judgment and the contributions I make. We had 52.29% of respondents in the affirmative on this one. And you'll notice that nice stair step of growth that we've seen over the last three years with this particular item. The next item we'll take a look at, the culture and climate where I work is positive and healthy. We had 61.37% of our respondents respond in the affirmative. And you can take a look at that three-year data trend as well. This next item, it's on the survey every year, but this is the first year I've pointed it out to the board in this presentation. And I just think it's, this speaks very well of our staff. It says, "My role includes serving our students and parents." And we had 94.02% of all respondents respond in the affirmative. So whether you're a teacher, a principal, someone in a back office or a custodian, 94% of our staff says, "My job is working with kids and parents." I think that speaks volumes for, for our, our staff here. It shows what makes Fox great. My input or the feedback I provide is valued by my administrator supervisor. We had 67.22% of respondents respond in the affirmative. You kind of see how that's looked over the last three years. And then a similar question of that, "My input or the feedback I provide is valued by my colleagues." We had 79.05% of respondents respond in the affirmative to that one. And we see how the, we've had a little shift in the strongly agree and agree over the last couple of years. Next item, "I am involved in the decision-making process in my school or department." We had 55.98% of respondents respond in the affirmative. And you see how that's grown just a tad over the last couple of years. Staff members are given the opportunity to grow as leaders. We had 67.3% of respondents in the affirmative there. And we see how that's remained rather steady over the last number of years. "A culture of trust and respect exists for taking risks and supporting ideas for change." We had 56.52% of our staff respond in the affirmative. And there's another one where you've seen marginal but steady growth over the last three years. We have staff, "We have a shared mission and vision where I work." And 73.57% of respondents responded in the affirmative. And we've seen a little bit of growth there as well. "Conflict among staffers resolved in a fair, effective and timely manner." We had approximately 50.68% of respondents in the affirmative on that one. "I feel safe and supported to try new ideas." We had 71.67% of respondents say they feel safe to try new ideas in their classroom or workspace. And you see how that's looked over the last couple of years. "I feel comfortable to approach admin or supervisor with concern or complaint." And we had 73.81% responding in the affirmative there. And that's remained relatively steady with a slight uptick over the last couple of years. "This item will track more closely as we move towards late starts." "PLC time is purposeful, effective and related to student learning." We had 49.76% of respondents in the affirmative. And this one, I made a note that we had 32.5% respond, neutral, no opinion. So I would assume that kind of falls to our operational staff. And we're preparing our students for the future. This is the last itemized one that we'll look at. We had 67.65% of our respondents respond in the affirmative. And you can see how that has shifted over the last three years with the negative dropping just a little bit. At the end of our staff survey, we leave an option for staff to leave open remarks. Again, these are anonymous. And with these, we kind of look at the trends. So the top couple trends were related to curriculum PD, administration, negative culture and positive culture. The thing that struck me as I kind of looked at this chart was that the, the comments about negative climate culture and positive climate culture were super, super close in those top trends. So I thought that was, that was, and I'm sorry, I don't have the data on the previous years from that, but that is a nice shift that we're seeing in the results of this particular survey. So the question that usually comes from this is what do we do with this data once we collect it? Like I said, this survey was given in May. So over the summer, I went through, I put everything together in July at a cabinet. As a cabinet, we kind of looked at the data. We reviewed it. Dr. Frigo uses this every year as he meets, he meets with classified departments. We meet with teacher leaders. And this data helps to drive those conversations that he has for growth with those groups. So he's going to continue that work. And we also have building-level review and action planning. So I know that I give Doctors Cardona and Bain this data that they share with their principals. And actually, this year, all principals as part of their building improvement plans. So what I have up on screen now is actually a screenshot of the building improvement plan template that the building principals will use. And they will have a culture and climate goal that comes from their survey data. So trying to be really intentional with sharing that data and giving them opportunities to, to use that to grow as a building. I know that was really exciting. Any questions?
I've got a couple. I guess, I guess first off, since we ended with the BIPs, Dr. Bain and Dr. Cardona, talk a little bit about what that conversation looks like and what the building administrators are taking away from that and what you think they're going to, how that's going to work in as they're creating their, their building improvement plans.
So one of the things we talked about is each, each one of the buildings has their own data, so it's separated by building. We have shared that with our principals. And you'll notice on the very bottom section, it says positive culture and climate. So the district building survey result is a required measurement that they have to use. So we gave them the data. We said, "Go through this. As your admin team, look at it. Find your trends." And then they are required to come up with one other way to measure their culture and climate. And then they can add a third, which is why that third line there is in green. So basically, at this point, all we've done is we've given them the data. We've said, "Look through it with your, with your team and come up with some patterns." You know, the, the questions is easy to come up with the patterns and see. And I gave them the data over the course of two years. So they can see what last year's was and what this year was. And that's what they're going to build their goals around. And then I told them in the comments that they need to go through and they need to find just commonalities, right? There's a lot of different things that are said, but they need to go through and find out what are, what are the big, the big ideas that tend to show up in multiple different comments. So that's kind of where we're at right now in that process.
Yeah, I would say that in addition to that, a lot of our buildings choose to event this through their leadership team as well. So they take that back to them, let them dissect that and talk about it as a team. The follow-up with that, with the building improvement plan, the good part is they get time to digest it, think about it, reflect on it. You know, we have buildings where there's two brand-new principals, so they can kind of see where that left off last year. And it gives them a kind of a head start of what that looks like going into this year. And then we have buildings where the team has been established for some, some time and everything in between. And then it's Tammy and I's job then to, at the, as, after the building year gets started in September and October, we'll sit down with each building leader and talk about those in specific, about what we saw, what they saw, and what their plan is to attack them.
I, you know, and I think those, those conversations are great. I just want to remind you and everyone that participates in this is that we talk about data, but a lot of this comes from feelings. And sometimes those things are different. And I would just remind those conversations that we need to be talking about feelings as well because you can throw data up there. But if, if that's not how you're making a person that's working or in your building feeling, then there's a disconnect there. So I just would, would kind of keep that in mind. And I guess this, the second question is really, JP, you'd mentioned this, but this can go out to anybody, is- mentioned this, but this can go out to anybody, is, is, so we, we've had some increase in the affirmatives. Why do we think that that has been going on and that's been trending in the right direction?
You know, I think that we give additional opportunities for feedback. I think that helps, right? So we, our staff sees that we're having some of these meetings and we're actually, we're taking action on some of the, some of those opportunities for growth, and I think that is partially reflecting our data. I think Dr. Frego may.
Yeah, so as we've evolved with my discussions with, I meet with custodians, and I meet with maintenance, bus drivers, and we have discussions about general, like, generalized concerns. One thing I've asked them to do, I've taken the action of saying, "Please go back to your group and tell them what we talked about and some of the outcomes of those decisions." For example, one of the things the bus drivers thought was difficult is they sit at a building and wait for the kids to come out, or in the morning, they drop kids off. I mean, it sounds simple, but it was a big thing to them. They can't use the restroom because they can't get in the building. So we, I walked, talked to JP, and we created badges for them, so if they're at a building, they can get used to bathroom. So we made sure we have that dual communication, that administration's hearing you, and then we don't, we can't always solve it, but tell them what the discussions were, why we couldn't, or this is the plan to, to answer their concerns. So I think that's helped. I didn't initially ask that of them, that to go back to their group. I made an assumption on my part, which is not good. I gave some more direction, and I think we've created a better environment for people to feel like they can state their concerns, and we may not solve them, but they're listened to, and we give them an answer why we couldn't solve it.
Well, we, we.
I don't have any hard data on that. That's just a feeling, but I think that's how it is.
Well, that's a part of this, and we have conversations as a board and as departments about customer service, and about how, you know, every area we can improve in our customer service, what's that, whether that's our customer service with our students, with our teachers, with our other staff, with the public and all of that. So I think that that's also part of that, is that we need to keep that to the forefront of, of as we're trying to work through problems, and we might not be able to solve a problem, or at least going to listen and, and hopefully that person or that, that group can feel that they're, they're heard. Anybody else have any?
Well, I think the important thing of that is that circle back. If we can't, we explain why. I mean, the why is not just, they asked us, and we tell them, "Well, can't get done." This is why we can't do it. And then they go back and we problem-solve and figure out a different way, but it's that two-way communication, and the people feel like they're heard, and that's, that's my thoughts.
The, the only comment I have is that all this data somehow should align with the ultimate outcome that we're looking for, and that's improved student learning and achievement. And I was just looking at this last one here. We are preparing our students for the future. Well, I kind of turned that into, I figured out a way to turn that into an index number, and rough calculations, we've gone from a three-point-five up to a three-point-eight over the last three years, which aligns with our achievement too, because our achievement has been going up over the last three years as well. And so when you get all this data aligning, if we're getting good reports, we should be getting good reports relative to student learning too. So that's, that's a good sign.
Thank you.
Jim, I think there's some research on collective efficacy that, that indicates that. Dustin and Tammy talk with our instructional leaders about that a lot.
Just to go back on that, Mr. Scott, you know, one of the things that I know Tammy and I have been pretty intentional about with our leaders is, you know, Tammy and I give our principals, they can take surveys on us at the end of the year, right? And so we take that. And so what's important, you know, that we stress with our leaders is, if you give a survey, you got to follow up with what you're doing with that survey, right? So we've, you know, when we met with our principals, I had a slide specifically for our principals that said, "Your survey data has caused me to do X." And so we've really, I think that's been an improvement that we've been pretty intentional about. Don't give a survey, and then not tell them what you've done by that. And so we've encouraged our principals to say, "When that teacher's come back, have a slide that says, 'When I asked you and gave you the survey on what you want to stop, what you, and explain what changes you've made, so that they are validated.'"
You know, one thing I want to point out too is, as part of the survey, all of Central Office can take that survey as well. And so we, as a cabinet, sat at one of our cabinet meetings and went through all the data that specifically talked about our building, because we're a building in the system as well, and we kind of all as a team talked about, you know, what are the things that we need to look at and address.
So that was, that was the third part of this, is, is so out of this data and this conversation, what are some areas that we're going to work on for next year?
I'm glad you brought that up. So at our next cabinet meeting, I have a piece on the agenda. So one of them specifically was from secretaries, right, and making sure that Central Office heard their concerns and their feedback, right? Because they contact us a lot for the many things that they deal with. So Jamie Willis, who assists Tammy and I, has coordinated what she's calling a chat and chew. So it's over lunchtimes throughout the year that members from cabinet will sign up to meet with the secretary specifically. So that, to your point earlier, some of their ideas might be great, but it just might not be able to be implemented in a way that, because it just doesn't meet certain criteria. So to bridge that gap, we're putting ourselves out there, and they can submit questions that they have, and then we'll meet with them throughout the school year. So we'll sign up for times, and there'll be two or three of us to kind of get their feedback. So a specific trend in data we saw from secretaries is that they just felt that disconnect, so we have to try to repair that.
I think one of the big areas that we talked about as a cabinet is still that customer service. We got actually into a lengthy conversation about the phone answering system, and how does that work? And when a parent calls in, do they get a, you know, do they get a voice recorder? Do they have to press one, two? You know, how long does it take them? And we actually practiced and called a couple of buildings just to figure out, you know, where is our customer service right now? Because with the new cell phone law, right, where we may have some more calls coming in. So those are all conversations we've had as a cabinet, and one of the areas of focus is, is going to continue to be our customer service.
So the, this, oh, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I was just going to touch on the student learning that both of you mentioned as well. I think too, our teachers have made such an investment and taken such ownership in the classroom over the last few years. You know, we've, after, this year we'll have curriculum written in every content, and that's the teachers doing that. And just, I was telling Judy, you know, all but seventy-two of our teachers came to Amplify Training during the summer, and that's huge. So I think there's a pride there, and there's an ownership that our teachers are putting out there and investing in their students. And I think that that can be reflected in the culture and how they're feeling, you know, about, about where they work and that pride. I mean, we saw an increase in pride, and I think it goes back to the work that they're doing, and will continue to do as we work to improve our teaching and learning. So just want to give them a shout-out for that.
And I'm going to just speak as one board member, not for the board, but these are the types of, the, the circles that come around based off information that we're talking to our folks about, are things that I like to hear that we're actively working on, so that I know if someone asks me a question, I can say, "Well, I know, I know how this, this process has been working." I'm also really happy that you're moving the, the time of this survey, because I think you'll, you'll have more results, and I think that that, it will benefit the efficacy of the, the survey. So I appreciate all of this information.
Yeah, I would just, you know, say I'm encouraged by a lot of what we see here, not even so much the data in itself, but, you know, we, we operate in the business of people. We don't manufacture anything. We max, we manufacture people at the end of the day through learning, and, you know, we have the obligation from the top down to invest in those underneath of us, that, you know, we make, you know, the administrators feel valued, who then turn around and need to make their staff feel valued, who then turn around and make students feel valued, and it all builds on each other. That creates that learning environment that then is successful, because if people don't want to come to work to, to teach students, you know, as much as they love to, if you know the atmosphere isn't positive, it, it carries into what you do. So I'm very encouraged by how we've seen the data start to go upward. I know we made that a focus goal at one point to see that, but, you know, I'm also, you know, would reiterate that we can't just walk away now with it as a success, that we, you know, we always have to keep that improvement in mind, and I'm glad to see how we're rolling that down, you know, even further into the building level, because at the end of the day, we can make Central Office great, but the rest of the district's going to suffer if it's not at the building level and it's being successful there, and that we're getting that feedback from the bottom up, because they're in the trenches day in and day out, seeing what things are there. You know, you made the example earlier about the, the badge with the bus drivers. Now, getting that feedback that we can build on that, it's often those stupid little simple things that can become big burdens for people to get over, and we don't fix them because we don't know about them. So when we can get that feedback and build on that, it just removes more of the barriers that are in the way for, for us to be successful. So I give all of you guys, you know, a lot of credit for what we've done so far, and again, I'm very optimistic and encouraged by what we've seen, and excited to see more.
I want to say the same thing. I think Dr. Frego's leadership has shown that he's approachable. People can contact him. I think that he trusts his staff and that they've worked together tremendously to show that they care about the teachers and the cooks and the nurses and the janitors, and, and I think that you all have worked really, really hard these past three years. We've had people retire, and we've added new, new faces, and I think everybody's working together, and I think people, the teachers, the parents, they, they're beginning to see that people do care and that they are important. And I, I think that goes a big, huge thanks to the leadership team that it tr画s on down, and I just want to say thank you to Dr. Frego and to all of you who lead the entire school district. It's, it's really taken these three years to change the climate and the culture, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It takes a team, it takes a lot of people, but if you remember, in two thousand twenty-two, our teachers, our community, our, everybody, our staff said they wanted fidelity, consistency across the district. And I think seventy, all but seventy-two teachers came to training this summer because they asked us to provide them consistent resources, consistent curriculum. We heard that over and over again. What is it? Six of the fifteen goals mentioned that from the C SIP, and that's what's heartwarming for me, is we, we put the resources in the C SIP, we've act, we put that into action, and it's, we're seeing the fruits of it. People feel like they're listened to, because they've been asking for years for resources, and we've made them go find it on their own. So it's a support of the board for the C SIP, support of the board for believing in the leadership team, but they, they're answering by their actions. They asked for something, we provided it, and they're showing up, and they're thirsting for that opportunity to learn and be better for their kids. So I think it's really exciting, this, the whole thing. But it, again, I appreciate your patience, because I kept saying, "This isn't going to happen overnight. It's going to take time, and it'll be incremental." We're larger than ninety-seven percent of the districts in the state. I say that all the time. We're a big organization, and change occurs gradually, but it's going in the right direction.
Hopefully with these changes and the positive outcome of solving problems and having solutions, maybe we'll have even more people take it in the future, because I, I'm not a Debbie Downer, but the operational staff, we only had thirty-three, almost thirty-four percent take it. So I would love to see that increase, and, I mean, we are over fifty percent for the certified staff, but even if we could get to seventy-five percent, I think we could help more people and build a better culture.
And I think that's probably the one takeaway I would take from this as well as, you know, how are we looking to improve participation in it to get us more data?
Well, and that's, that's a good question of the years. Are we having more people take it throughout the last three years? Like, what does that bar graph look like?
That was one of the first, I, I only showed you eighty-seven bar graphs, so it's hard, it should be easy to remember, but that's, it's ticked down about a percentage a year.
It ticks down about a percentage?
Yeah, it's been ticking down. It's been ticking down. My hope is that pushing it earlier in the year is going to increase participation.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to second everybody's sentiments. You know, it's nice to see things trending in a positive direction. I know I was critical of the, the questions on the survey last year when we talked about this, but I also understand the reason why. You know, you can't have cohort data if you're changing the frame of the data that you're looking at and the questions that you're asking. So you have to have that to be able to have these graphs and see these trends. And I would say just beyond that, that, you know, if people don't think that, you know, something is done with this, this information, the illustrations are through some of the stories that were shared here. You know, the, the administration is making it a point to be more present, have those conversations, make sure that everybody feels heard, you know, and I think that that's huge and key. And, you know, those, those, those little things, you're not going to, you're not going to have the opportunity to vent that through the survey necessarily, you know, that happens through the conversations, you know, with you guys showing support for, you know, all of the staff. And so huge kudos to all of you, you know, for what you've done. And I would just say, keep it up and, you know, use this to keep pinpointing, you know, the areas of concern where we seek improvement. I am really interested to see what happens with the PLC time being purposeful in the next couple of years. Hopefully, we see a major uptick in that one in particular, and that's about all I have. Thank you, JP.
All right. Well, don't go anywhere. We have four, anyone else? Okay. We have four point one, Federal Program Consulting Incorporated Agreement.
Yes, that's me again. Fox C six is requesting the approval of an agreement with Federal Program Consulting Incorporated for E-Rate consulting services for the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school years. This vendor handles all of the district's applications, bidding, and compliance reporting for the E-Rate program for the federal government. E-Rate is a program that gives us discounts on external connections, so what brand, the internet service we get, and then internal connections, the things in our district, like the access points and the switches that distribute internet inside our district. So like I said, the cost of this agreement is three thousand for the first year and thirty-five hundred for the second and third year of the agreement for E-Rate category-one services. Category-one are external connections, so basically that's our internet service. So we pay a fee for, for the consultant to file and bid our internet service. In addition, this agreement stipulates that we pay three percent of the district's reimbursement on E-Rate category-two projects. So category-two, like I said, are our internal connections. So right now, at the last board meeting, or board meeting before, you, you approved an E-Rate bid to do the wiring at Fox High School, so we could upgrade the fiber there. The cost of that project was sixty-two, and we pay three percent of the reimbursement. The project was sixty-two thousand, the E-Rate portion was thirty-one four, so then we pay him nine hundred forty-four dollars of that.
So is this a renewal?
Yes, this, this is a renewal. It's a current thing we already do. I just need you guys to approve it so that we can continue.
And it more than pays for it itself, from the sound of it, as we say, you know, I think we have two big savings in the.
We have lots of big savings every year.
Yeah, so you, you beat me to the punch. I was going to bring up the data from the last meeting. That makes us pretty much a no-brainer and one of our smarter investments. Motion Litner.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I want to be prepared if you had a question about it.
Four point two, change order in asphalt repair.
Good evening. We're asking the board to approve the Spencer Contracting Change Order totaling two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred, sixty-one dollars and fifty cents at Antonia Elementary. The entire back playground, half the access road, two full sections of parking lot in front of the school, including the area over by the garage, and several smaller areas near the cafeteria entrance and behind the garbage bins required full-depth replacement due to unsuitable subgrade. A total of fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine square feet of asphalt was removed with ten inches excavated and replaced with eight inches of rock and two inches of base asphalt, followed by a two-inch asphalt overlay. At Ridgeway Middle School, after removing the top ten inches of asphalt, crews encountered unsuitable soil that required additional excavation up to twenty-seven inches deep in some areas to reach stable ground. This resulted in four hundred and forty-six cubic yards of subgrade repair across two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six square yards. That's a lot of metric system or English system. Of the lot, to rebuild the lot properly, crews upgraded the site for proper drainage, installed sixteen hundred tons of rock compared to the originally estimated nine hundred and seventy tons, and placed an initial two-inch asphalt base layer. Second two-inch overlay will follow as that project is wrapped up. Additional work included installation of an asphalt curb. This will all be paid for out of capital. This will all be paid for out of capital funds. Mr. Kevin Peel, Director of Maintenance is here. If you have any specific technical questions to all those yards of asphalt and.
With all that detail, I'm not sure we're going to have any questions.
Well, I asked him to do that so our public knew what was involved in this work. It was an unforeseen condition. I've talked, Kevin and Tracy, and I've talked, when we do future asphalt projects, we're going to have more contingency in there because we don't know what, and we figure there's going to be a lot of water penetration at some of our other sites. This is all about us patching instead of replacing parking lots and the water getting underneath and killing the sub base. We, when we were out at Ridgewood, Kevin and I were watching the trucks and the drive across the existing parking lot and the parking lot was sinking because there's no subgrade. So go ahead.
I was going to ask that. Did we have quite a bit of.
Come on up, Kevin.
Settling with the existing asphalt where you had larger depressions in there because the subgrade was kind of already washed out, I would assume?
Yeah, we did. Ridgewood, the front of Ridgewood was really bad. They did a load test Dr. Frego was talking about. They drive the truck fully loaded with gravel in it, back and forth and back and forth. And we just saw wave after wave. The machines were parked overnight, the first night they were on site, and they sank like two inches in the asphalt just by sitting on top of it. So there was definitely a lot of work to be done at Ridgewood.
So I would, I would assume then by, you know, redoing this base and everything, we're prolonging the life of the asphalt. We're putting in there as much as anything.
Yes, sir. That goes with preventative maintenance too. We got to get on a schedule for sealing and restriping every three years. Crack sealing is a big thing so that water doesn't seep down underneath that asphalt and get in the, get in the base there.
Both asphalt companies said, well, the only time we've ever been out here is to patch.
Yeah.
And so you're seeing that, so that's another one of Kevin's tasks to set up, you know, ongoing maintenance. If you, those of you that are familiar with Ridgewood, that front, if you remember, was almost entirely a mosaic of patches and it, it was, there wasn't much under there.
No.
Wasn't much underneath.
To your comment on the future projects we have on the asphalt, Jared and I are talking about finding out how we can do core samples on those parking lots. That way we can put the specs and the RFP properly so we're not looking at a $200,000 change order. You know, we can get on top of that before we start the work.
Because we did Sekman Campus and Fox Campus and the Service Center and we didn't run into it. It's, but it's been these other building, like Antonia, if you're familiar with it, there's a hill behind it and they, they've had water issues for years, Ridgewood has. We will probably be bringing one to you, it looks like, for Londerell. Londerell had a lot of water penetration underneath, Kevin. We're, in fact, we are bringing one for the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know how many acres of asphalt pavement we have?
I do not.
I told you they'll want that, right?
You did not tell me that.
For feet, for feet. I guess square feet, we're almost 2 million.
2 million square feet, there you go.
Almost 2 million.
Okay, there you go.
But I tell you what, our public appreciates this. I hear it all the time in the store, at the market. They really notice that we're trying to take care of our property and make it look like a nice place for kids and staff to be. So it's, it's really gone well, the work we're doing. So I thank you for letting us have, set up this program to address this.
Yeah. Thank you.
It just gives a great facelift to things, you know? Unfortunately, you know, like at the Service Center parking lot, driving up and down 6167, it stares you in the face when it looks terrible and it's got the big Fox Service Center sign right behind it to stare you in the face.
But it's been redone and it looks amazing now.
I think it stares you in the face when it's new.
That's right.
It's a win-win.
So it looks great.
Okay, we need a motion to approve Spencer Contracting Change Order as presented.
Motion, Littner.
Second, Scott.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 4.3.
Thank you.
What is that? V B, how do you say that?
V S I.
Cell Tower Lease Amendment. Dr. Frego.
There's a cell tower at Londerell. Company contacted Kevin Peel, wanted to extend the lease and they do pay us rent to use that thing. And I assume we're going to, we're going to make a motion to approve, keep the cell tower there. First Amendment to the memorandum of the lease as presented.
Okay, we need a motion to, oh, you just read that.
Yes.
Motion, Steph.
Second, Myers.
Motion, second. Any questions?
One question. I know when we put that in, that was a number of years ago, there was some hope that somehow would improve the cell reception down in our schools and stuff. And I don't know if that's changed much.
I don't think that's the same one.
This is at Londerell.
This is at Londerell.
Oh, this is at Londerell.
Yeah.
The one there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 4.4 Extra Duty Pay Rates. Dr. Birch.
We are requesting that the board's approval for the attached revised extra duty pay rates. This revision adds a 10-day stipend for the dean of students, paid at the individual's daily rate, and a 6-day stipend for the summer school virtual coordinator, paid at the individual's daily rate.
Okay, we need a motion to approve extra duty pay rates as presented.
Motion, Fraser.
Any questions regarding this? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 5.1 Second Reading and Adoption of Policies. Dr. Birch.
We are requesting that the board accept all attached policies for a second reading and adoption. All policy updates are MSBA recommendations with explanations at the beginning of each policy.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the policies? Comments? Okay, we need a motion to accept the presented policies for a second reading and adoption.
Motion, Scott.
Second, Shalou.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 5.2 Reading, first reading and adoption of policies. Dr. Birch.
We are requesting that the board accept all attached policies for our first reading and adoption. All policy updates are MSBA recommendations with explanations at the beginning.
Any questions regarding these?
I just appreciate you guys taking my comments from some of the other cell stuff we've talked about and working with MSBA and getting this through and pushed through.
Yes, and for our public, a lot of these, the reason we're doing these with just the first reading and adoption is because legally we have to have a policy in place by the 28th of August, the latest. And school starts next week about the cell phones and some of the mission participation items. So the board has accommodated us on our recommendation to approve them with one reading and we appreciate that, if they end up.
It was a lot of reading.
It's a lot of reading.
This is, just for these particular things that are pushing, we're up against the wall on.
Yes.
We're not changing our practice of.
No, we have the flexibility to do this in our policy currently.
Yeah.
We normally don't, but that's why I wanted to point out to our public what we're doing.
And we, I appreciate you getting these to us a little bit earlier, so we did have the time to dissect it instead of just the weekend. So we need a motion to accept the presented policies for a first reading and adoption.
Motion, Myers.
Second, Littner.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6.1 We need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion, Scott.
Second, Fraser.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda?[1720.01]